2023. Today, we will have our invocation led by Pastor Broderick Santiago of Mosaic Church. That will be followed by the pledge which I will lead. Those of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Oh God, our God, the giver and the sustainer of life, the source of all wisdom, the one whose grace abounds. We seek you today and invite you into this place. We invite you to this sacred place, oh God, where decisions need to be made. We invite you to this place, oh God, where we may not all agree, but God, we can agree on one thing. You are still in charge. And so, God, my prayer today is that those who are assembled, who are in charge of the decisions, I pray, oh God, that you would make them an instrument of peace, a vessel of grace, and then, God, a pillar of justice for the greater good of the community, the beloved community that we all love and serve in. God, we ask that you would bless this session today. I know that the assignment is not light, but God, those who are in charge are able, and it's because of your grace. Bless our time together this morning. All those agree. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for the invocation. Our meeting is now called to order, and I'll turn things over to our zoning manager.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When the case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are here. After that, we're going to call the same case, see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise your hand so they can be counted for the record. After recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time or for rebuttal. So you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a specific case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are three cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard. First case is resounding case Z12 of 2023, Fernando Chavera, Chavaria. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. Next case is resounding case Z19 of 2023, Kenneth G. Clark. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Last case is resounding case Z22 of 2023, MRE Properties and Investments LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, we did get a request last night to withdraw one more case that's on your agenda to be heard. That's resounding case Z18 of 2023, Icon Renovations LLC. The applicant is asking this case to be withdrawn without prejudice, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. I make a motion to withdraw Z18 from today's agenda, withdrawn without prejudice. And I also ask that the staff waive the zoning application fees if a new application is submitted within the next 12 months.
Okay.
Second and discussion. I need to submit.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner?
And then if the clerk could record my statement as on file. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. There are six cases on today's agenda which have been continued by the planning commissioner staff, and these six cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued, or excuse me, this case was held by the planning commission until the August 1st, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z60 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z67 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z15 of 2023, SDP Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z15 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z23 of 2023, Mike Norton. This case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z23 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z24 of 2023, SWI Investments LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z24 of 2023 will not be heard today. And finally, LUP 11 of 2023, Rick Coleman. This case was continued by the staff until the August 1st, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP 11 of 2023 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your cell phones off as the ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information may be submitted, or excuse me, any information submitted to the board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Go ahead, John. Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for July 18th, 2023. First case on consent is resounding case Z13, Matthew C. Flornoy requests a rezoning from R30 to R20 for a single-family subdivision in landlot 341 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Antioch Road at the terminus of Armor Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of Z13 to the R20 zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, all staff comments and recommendations shall apply and supersede any other conditions or stipulations, including those in the June 26th, 2023 stipulation letter, subject only to the superseding conditions stated below. Number two, site plan dated June 6th, 2023 is to be revised and submitted for the board of commissioners' approval with review by the neighbors, with review by the neighbors the applicant's representative has been a meeting with, or had, or, or, excuse me, with review by the neighbors with the applicant's representative which they have been meeting with, with final approval by the district commissioner. Number three, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated June 26th, 2023 with the following changes. A, item number one revised to read, all staff comments or recommendations shall apply and govern. B, item number two revised to read, site plan is to be revised to incorporate the following comments in a letter from Richard Henzie. A, plant hedgerow trees along the property line of the Southern Burgers and Combs properties, leaving a construction buffer around the perimeter of the subject property. B, position the homes toward the center of the lots, thereby creating larger rear lots. C, change the plan to include cul-de-sacs in lieu of original loop plan. D, construction of homes shall be at least three sides, brick, stone, and hardy board. E, plant hedgerow trees along Antioch Road as a view shed with respect to the detention pond in the rear of the houses. C, item number four, add to the end specifying the use of certain materials. Those materials must appear, cover a minimum of three sides on each building built on that, on the track. D, item number seven, add to read, the covenants referenced shall include a prohibit, a prohibition against having more than 10% of the units in rental. E, number 14, delete in its entirety. F, items 18 and 19, add to the end, submission of the proposed plan to the county arborist with the district commissioner to a final approval. Overplacement of the planting of the trees. G, item number 21, add to the end, mailbox kiosks should be constructed with the same materials as those indicated in item number four. Number four, entrance and landscaping appearance shall appear to be per the attachment to the email dated June 26th, 2023 from Carolyn Cook on behalf of Kevin Moore. Number five, if gravity sewer flow is not available to service all lots, then any lot not serviced by gravity flow sewer must be 80,000 square feet. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z13? The applicant is here, okay. Is there anyone, is anyone here opposed to Z13? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, I just want to clarify. We had a new stipulation letter that was dated July 10th, 2023, and also a site plan that was submitted on, or it says here on July 3rd, 2023. Did you read those in the record? Because I think you read in what was at the planning commission.
Yes, I read in the planning commission recommendation, Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, so if we could please, for the clerk, we need to substitute the stipulation letter that is dated July 10th of 2023. And I'll go ahead and send this also to the clerk. And Kevin, if you're here, if you can verify with me, please.
Commissioner Gamble.
Commissioner Gamble, I have a July 12th stip letter from Mr. Moore in my book. Was there one? Is that the one from after July 10th that year?
So is that, is that the?
That's the one that's in the electronic record as well.
I don't see one from the 10th.
Is it the 12th?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the letter you have.
Because on your email, it's.
I think you just have the draft that was dated that day.
Okay.
And then when we finalized it, it was dated the 12th and submitted.
It was the 12th, okay. So if, for the clerk, if we could change that to July 12th of 2023? And then also the site plan that was received. John, what date?
It should have been attached in the letter of July 12th.
Okay.
That's correct.
It's dated July 3rd of 2023 as well.
July 3rd?
Yep.
Okay.
And just, Kevin, thank you again for working with the community on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Before you leave, just a question for you, Commissioner Gamble or John. The changes to the letter of agreeable conditions for the zoning hearing consent agenda, it refers to item one, item two. Is the numbering the same from this July 6th, 20, excuse me, from this July 12th letter and the June 26th letter?
And I believe the letter from July 12th takes in those items that were numbered and lettered in the consent agenda. So.
Do you want me to redo the motion?
Yeah, let's redo the motion with the letters, the site plan, and all staff comments not in conflict.
Okay.
Correct.
Second.
To confirm for Chairwoman Cupid and Commissioner Gamble, the July 12th letter incorporated the recommendations from the planning commission into a final letter. So it updated it with those references, as well as updated the site plan to include those comments. So the July 12th letter.
Okay.
That way, it's one document you don't have to particularly for zoning staff in the future.
And just to add on, the community also had reviewed that stip letter and was in agreement with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to redo it, or you want me to?
I'll go ahead and redo it.
Okay.
So the staff would recommend the board approve Z13, subject to Kevin Moore's letters, led, subject to Kevin Moore's letter dated July 12th, 2023, which includes a site plan that's attached to it, and then all staff comments or recommendations not in conflict.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next case is resounding case Z20, Jacob Lee requested rezoning from R20 to R15 for single-family residences in landlot 699 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Ridge Road, across from Ivy Ridge Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z20 to the R15 zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, district commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number two, variances as stated in the zoning division comments and recommendations. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number six, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And number seven, site plan review comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. First one we're going to hear is LUP 13, Donna Jordan. Request a temporary land use permit renewal to allow two houses on one lot in landlot 42 of the 18th District. The property is located on the north side of Lee Road, west of Veston Memorial Highway. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 13 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on May 1st, 2023. Number two, for this applicant and current family use only. Number three, if the property is sold to another party or the applicant or the family cease to use the second house, then the second house shall be converted to a storage building. Number four, second house not to be used as a rental unit. Number five, code enforcement staff shall be granted full access to inspect the property on a quarterly basis to ensure compliance during a 24-month period. Number six, all vehicles shall be parked in the driveway on a hardened surface and shall have current registrations. Number seven, no vehicles shall be parked in the backyard for any length of time or for any reason. Number eight, the use of campers or recreational vehicles for living space is prohibited. Number nine, items stored on the property shall be stored in an enclosed structure. Number 10, applicant must contact Cobb County Code Enforcement and schedule a follow-up visit every six months, with the first visit no later than December 2023. Number 11, all staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And number 12, all vehicles must have current registrations and must be in running order and remain uncovered by TARPs. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 13?
None.
No?
I'd like to amend condition. Amend condition 12 to include that TARPs that are currently on any vehicles are to be removed no later than July 21st, 2023.
Okay.
Is the applicant amenable to that additional condition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For those who are viewing this remotely, the applicant stated yes.
Thank you. Okay, next land use permit on consent agenda is Burnt Hickory Church of Christ Incorporated. Request a temporary land use permit renewal for a daycare preschool facility in landlot 291 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Burnt Hickory Road, west of New Salem Road. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 15 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division, May 4th, 2023, with the district commissioner approved, item modifications. Number two, daycare-related banners to be no larger than three feet by five feet. And number three, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 15? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. Other business, item number 30 of 2023 is to consider a reduction of required minimum public roof footage from 75 feet to 69 feet for lot two, and to 56 feet for lot three for Triple J Homes LLC. The property is located on the northeastern side of Old 41 Highway, north of Blue Springs Road, in landlot 86 of the 20th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, solid wooden privacy fence, six feet in height, will be installed along the western side of lot one, a distance of 250 feet from the right-of-way. Number two, all three lots to have one shared access point. Number three, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. Number four, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number five, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. And number six, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business, item number 30?
None.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you. And John, I believe we do have at least one additional case to add to consent.
Okay. I believe that's OB 31?
Correct.
Okay, we read it in, see if there's anyone here to oppose it. Other business, item number 31 of 2023 is to consider amending the stipulations for Cole Isbon regarding rezoning application, Z93 of 1989, for property located at the eastern terminus of Gateside Lane, west of Gateside Place, in landlot 74 of the 1st District. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business, item number 31? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Thank you. So I just move to add this to the consent agenda, OB 31, with all staff comments and recommendations.
Not otherwise in conflict.
Not otherwise in conflict, thank you.
Can I add one more thing to that?
Yes.
The site plan contained in the other business packet received May 25th, 2023, with the district commissioner approved, item modifications.
Perfect, thank you.
Maybe is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Are there any other cases to add to consent? All right, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Commissioner Gamble.
I would like to note that I'm opposed to OB 31.
All right, any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0, thank you. For those who are here as part of the consent agenda, you are free to leave at this time as those matters were approved. Or if you want to stay for the full zoning hearing, you're free to do that as well. Thank you.
Okay, moving into the agenda. First case we're going to hear today is resounding case Z9 of 2023, Aguas Vivas Centro Familiar de Adoración Incorporated, regarding rezoning application or was requesting rezoning from R20 to R24 Church in landlots 386 and 412 of the 18th District. The property is located on the north side of South Gordon Road, east of Starland Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z9?
Two.
Two? Okay, let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
All right, though, individuals who are presenting this matter are free to come to the front, please. Thank you.
Thank you, good morning. I wish we were first, because I haven't been in front of you before, so I would have rather I've seen someone else go first. My name's Mike Crawford, I'm with Columbia Engineering representing the applicant. This project began six or seven months ago, has gone through your process. And what I'd like to do is just kind of describe to you where we've been and where we are now. Overall, the current zoning on the site is R20. There was in 2014, there was a plan that allowed 46 homes that was revised to scale that back to a 3,200-square-foot church facility. And this R20 zoning does allow two units per acre. It's about a 10 and a half acre site, so that would allow for around 21 homes. We have agreed, we went to the planning commission a couple of times, had a hearing at the last meeting. We agree to all the stipulations except for there was a recommendation made to reduce the size from 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. The reason why we don't agree with that one is because that was arbitrary. It just came out of nowhere. We hadn't had a chance to site plan, space plan, and look at whether a 5,000-square-foot building would work for us. We've had the opportunity to do that now. And so what we're now proposing is, the original request was 10,000 square feet. At one time, there was a recommendation of almost 600 seats in the sanctuary. Now, what we are proposing is 6,800 square feet. We feel like that will give us a site that we can use that, and I'll talk through the site plan and just the, or the building plan in just a sec. There were a couple of other questions about what some of the building materials would be at the planning commission. I didn't know those at the time. I've since talked to the architect, and he's told me that it will be brick and split, split-faced block for the building, roof would be metal, and the signage out front will be low-profile, no electricity, no lights, none of that sort of thing. This plan here shows the 10,000-square-foot plan. This is what we have been asking for. This shows the sanctuary. You can see that there's a number of classrooms. There's private space for the pastor or conference room, a warming kitchen, some, some nice bathrooms and changing facilities for choirs and such. Now that we've gone to 6,800 square feet, this is the new revised plan. This is what it would look like. We still have the sanctuary, a small gathering area, still lobby and some gathering space. And then the area to the left would be pastor office. We need a finance commissioner or a finance office that can be locked. There would be a couple of classrooms, as the pastor of the church told me yesterday, while he is teaching the parents on Sunday morning. There needs to be a place for the kids to go to learn so that the parents can focus. The 5,000-square-foot plan would not allow almost any of this ancillary space. And so the reason why this is critical is when you go to church in the morning, you socialize, you maybe have coffee, there's refreshments. You need those other classrooms to be able to provide space for the kids to go while the parents are listening to the sermon. And so this 6,800-square-foot plan would allow us the opportunity to do that. 5,000 square feet is very, very small for a facility like this. Currently, the church leases about 3,000 square feet, has no space whatsoever to do anything. Every bit of that square footage is occupied by a chair for the sanctuary. And they actually have to, have to go off-site and lease space at hotels to even do, to do anything else, elders' meetings, anything. And so what this plan would do is allow the church the space to have some of those ancillary facilities, which makes the development worth it. Honestly, 5,000-square-feet building calls into question the viability of this project, to be honest. There's a reason why it was zoned 10 years ago as a 3,000-square-feet project and has been built. One of the, y'all know the location. This just shows what our proposed plan would be, shows the location of the building. There were some questions about screening and buffers. We did revise our stipulations to identify that we would provide screening along the entrance driveway. And then also, which you can see in this, this plan, this has not been updated to show, show the landscaping, but also closest to those houses along South Gordon Road will provide screening there as well. We believe the natural vegetation is enough, however, as a result of input received from the community and from the planning commission, we agreed to intensify our landscaping a bit. One thing I do want to point out is, if this site were developed under its existing zoning for 20 homes, I think that what would happen is a developer. for 20 homes, I think that what would happen is a developer would come in and clear-cut it, and then build a lot of asphalt and concrete, and then build homes. Under our plan, more than seven acres of the site will still remain vacant and will still remain in its current wooded state. The county owns the property just behind us to the left of this plan, and that's a potential future park site. So I think it's important to note as well, as opposed to cramming a bunch of homes in here, what we propose will leave a whole lot of vacant acreage back there adjacent to your future park. So we think this plan works well and is appropriately sized for this community. We will provide directional lighting, this is pretty standard. There was a photometric plan done for the 10,000 square foot site since we weren't expecting to be reducing the size in a week, we haven't had a chance to redo that plan. However, when we do go through the final site plan development process, we will provide new photometrics, we'll meet all requirements. It's not our intention at all to shine lights into any, off of our property. I think the prior photometric plan showed lighting levels of close to zero or maybe even up to a half a lumen at the property boundary, so we will not be impacting anyone with lights. There was a comment made at the last meeting of the Planning Commission about lights shining into people's bedrooms from our site, that's just not going to happen. If you look at this picture, shows where the building would be, this is also, this is the 10,000 square foot building in relation to the homes around it and with the existing vegetation that exists on the site. So we are going to leave most of that vegetation in place, and so the adjacent property is going to be very, very well screened in addition to the additional evergreen plantings that we agreed to make at the last meeting. The closest homes to us are 340 feet away, the next closest one is 385 feet away. There was somebody who spoke at the Planning Commission that was talking about lights shining in her bedroom, she's more than 1,000 feet away. So the plan that I just talked about in terms of the photometrics and the vegetation are just going to make it impossible for any lights to be shining into adjacent properties and impacting them. The church, at the end of the day, church wants to be a good neighbor, I mean, this is a church, they're coming into their neighborhood, they want to be a good neighbor, they don't intend to do anything that's going to impact everyone. There's about 11 properties that actually touch, 10 properties I think, that actually border our property, and most of them are more than 1,000 feet away, only those two are closer that I just referenced. There was some discussion of traffic. Again, initially, the proposal was 600 seats, now we're down to a little more than 200 seats. So we've scaled this back every step of the way to get to this point that we think is the plan that we can live with. Again, 5,000 sort of came out of nowhere, we didn't have a chance to react to that at the Planning Commission meeting, we don't think that's appropriate at all. 6,800 square feet's a big drop for us, but we think we can make that work. These numbers on this slide are, represent the 10,000 square foot building, we haven't had a chance to update this, but we did provide a left turn waiver request, your DOT approved that. So traffic impacts will be minimal, I actually went out there and sat there for three hours on a Sunday morning during the time that the church would operate to watch traffic on the corridor. And traffic is very, very light, it's about 120 cars an hour, it's about 60 cars each way in an hour, but they queue a little bit, and queues of two or three because there's signals on each end of this corridor. So that means there's large gaps in traffic, one to two minutes, when there are no vehicles going by, so we don't expect there will be any kind of traffic impact with folks accessing this site, turning left in or out. There's a question relative to elevations prior, so this plan just shows what the elevations would look like. And some other things that have come up. I think early on, there was a mistake in the original zoning application that showed the site plan to be bigger than what we want it to be. The fact is, this church is not a professional developer, they made a mistake on the initial application, it's been corrected. That created some angst, I think, with some of the folks around us, however, there's never been an intent to operate a school here, there's never been an intent to double the size of the building. What we're proposing now, the 6,800 square foot, is what we think we can live with. So with that, we agree to all the other recommendations. Our hours of operation will be Sunday morning, there's a service at 9:30, staff and folks arrive early. The nature of this church is families come, people carpool, has high auto occupancies, three, four, five people per car, so traffic is really pretty low in terms of use.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, your 10 minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
We'll now hear from opposition.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. We would ask that you deny this application for a church on this property on South Gordon Road. This is the fifth hearing that we have attended to speak about this church. And we're sorry to tell, we're sorry that there are no neighbors here this morning to also express their concerns in opposition to the church. They've attended previous Planning Commission hearings, but as the fifth hearing has rolled around, their work and family requirements have not made it possible for them to be here today. I do want to note, though, that a petition with opposition from neighbors of 30 neighbors around the property was submitted at the very first Planning Commission hearing and remains on record, I hope. Zoning is about the future, but this applicant wants you to look only at the present plan. We know what the original plan was, it's in writing, it was filed, it may have, it's now characterized as a mistake, but we certainly took it seriously. And when we first spoke with the applicants, they did not do anything to tell us that that was not the case, that that was a mistaken plan. The latest, this latest plan is down to 6,800 square feet, 186 seats, 65 parking spaces, and 10 hours a week. But what happened? Well, along the way, there was a need for a traffic study, but that's no longer needed because the plan has shrunk. And there was quite a bit of pushback from the community, so that shrunk the plan. But have the needs and the desires of the church really changed? That's something that we're not certain about. Because of the way this church is sited on this property and the existence of the original plan, there's essentially a blueprint for expansion on record. If this plan is approved as is, then it's very easy for this congregation, or if this property is sold to a different congregation, because once it's zoned, of course, these conditions run with the land, it's not about the intentions of this group of people, it's about the intentions of property owners into the future. It's very easy for those owners to come back to you and ask for an expansion, because frankly, there's plenty of room to do it. We believe now is the time to say no to this application. Churches are allowed in R20 zoning by special exception. Why is that? Why does your code provide that? Why is this hearing necessary at all? It's because not all churches fit in all residential areas, and this one does not fit here. This smaller plan is of smaller impact, but for how long? The northern wooded part of the site remains available to the property owner for development. Right now, they may have no plans to use it, but there's been no offer of a conservation easement or donating the property to the county for expansion of the park. So we can only conclude that that's an option that they would like to keep on the table. All churches want to grow, we certainly understand that. And with land available, it's easy to see how that could happen. Would that future expansion then trigger the traffic study that was originally planned for this application? If so, there's no room with their frontage for a decel lane. At what point would that left turn lane be required? Is that something that can happen with another business agenda item? The applicant's comparison to a 20-home subdivision misses the point. The adjacent residential development would have similar lighting, similar density, similar kinds of activities to the existing neighborhood. Not the lighting, not the traffic patterns of everyone coming and going at once, that is the case with the church. A densely wooded site? Well, it is right now, but it will not be once the land is cleared for the church. It's virtually all hardwoods, so there's not a visual barrier in the wintertime. On the site plan, I've marked the lots that will have, that will be adjacent to the area of the church property where the trees will be cleared. And I've also marked with yellow stars the homes that will have headlights in their backyards. And you notice when you look at the GIS map, that although those lots are deep, those homeowners do not have woods in their backyard, they have backyards in their backyards, they have grassy backyards. So the distance, the distance to the, that was sited previously for these homes to the church is interesting, but the more important thing is the distance of these backyards to those headlights, and it's much, much less than you were shown. At any rate, it's not the requirement or the duty of neighbors to provide the buffer. If I own a half acre lot, I should be able to use every bit of that half acre lot and expect the more intense use to buffer me on their own property, not in my backyard. The stipulations letter that we have, that's on file on your website, does not mention enhancing the buffers in any way, so there will be no screen in the wintertime. There's no certainty about the elevations, they're not included in the stipulations letter, only in their presentation. We don't know what they plan to do about fencing, there's no landscape plan, there's no, there's even a note in their stipulations letter that the buffer along the entrance road may need to be less than 35 feet. And there's no stipulation that there will not be an electronic sign that would essentially be in the neighbors' front yards. In fact, much of what was presented here today is not in their stipulations letter. Some of the conditions that, and stipulations that are suggested here are unenforceable and unrealistic. Probably the top of the list is the limitation of 20 hours of usage per week. What about holidays, weddings, funerals? The only enforcement mechanism is neighbor complaints. How would code enforcement verify that? An off-duty police officer to manage traffic for large events? How large? How will the neighbors know when an officer should have been present? How will code enforcement be able to respond? And the entrance road? What exactly is the maximum practical existing landscape buffer? And how much less than 35 feet will that buffer be? In summary, the land use category here is residential, and the expectation of this neighborhood is that this will be a residential use. The 2014 zoning for the Buddhist Meditation Center was accepted by the neighbors, they've been here to present that fact to the Planning Commission because the majority of the land was clearly stipulated to be left unused. The building would have been close to the street, as homes are, and would have appeared to most pastors by as simply another home. This is a much more intensive use. Too much traffic, too much noise, and simply a use pattern that is inconsistent with the neighborhood. If this property were situated such that the church could be closer to South Gordon Road and not be in so many folks' backyard, it would be a completely different situation. But the land, virtually landlocked nature of this property, combined with the endless possibilities for expansion in the future, can only lead us to one conclusion, one that we are not frankly happy to present to you. It's very difficult to speak in opposition to a church coming to our community. It's not the kind of thing we typically do, but we sincerely believe that this is not the right place for this church to locate. We wish them all the best, we wish them a home in our community, but we ask that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? There remains a minute and 42 seconds on our clock. All right, seeing that, I'll turn things over to our Commissioner. Thank you. May I have the applicant to approach? And sir, if you wouldn't mind repeating your name, I didn't get it the first.
Yes, Mike Crawford, with Columbia Engineering.
In reviewing your stipulation letter, item or bullet number six, it reads that any additional structures beyond the proposed 10,000 square foot facility would be subject to the site plan amendment process. My question to you is, what type of additional structures do you anticipate having at the property?
We have no plans for any additional structures.
But just for the record, while you don't have plans today, that does not mean that you will not expand in the future.
Like I said, we have no plans.
Today?
We have no plans to expand, I don't think, ever. Like I said, that initial site plan that showed that expansion area was something the architect put on the plan. We came to the first hearing, saw it, recognized it, said we can't do that, we can't even afford to do that. So we deleted that from the plan, and that's been the plan since, had to have it be deleted. So there's no plan to expand beyond the initial.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you answered that question regarding the 5,000 square feet. Outside of church services, what are some other activities or community events that you anticipate will be held at the church?
The pastor's here, can I let him speak? He can speak better than that.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Clayton Mendez, and I thank you for this opportunity to talk about what we do at church. We basically have three services a week. Tuesday is prayer, Wednesday is Bible studies, and we unite the families, and Sundays we have a regular service. Besides that, we don't have nothing else at church. The U sometimes practice, but we take that and put it together with the service sometimes. But everything we do is not to, how can I say this, to... Everything we are doing at church is to build a community, a better community. We've been serving on Franklin, and we've been helping the community to be a better community. That's what we do, help families, people we need. And when we find this place that we were praying, me and my wife, she's here, we thank God that we found the place that we can build families, stronger families, that they can believe, that they can stick together. We are not there to destroy anyone. And basically, we only have three services a week. We had the wrong, I don't know how it happened, but the bank didn't approve what we showed the first time. We don't have that kind of money. That's a lot of money there. We are just trying to build a church for family who wants to come and worship God. And the way he saved my life and my wife's life is the way we want to be able to thank God, serve in the community by, you know, accepting this as a pastor's.
Okay. But just specifically, in building stronger families and helping families, what other activities do you anticipate offering the families or the community?
Basically, we help them to prayers, we don't have other activities, we have prayer service, we help them how to pray, we pray for them. And then we have the Bible study where we get them to get to know God more.
Okay.
And then Sundays morning.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my next question can also be directed to you, but is it a reasonable assumption that the church will increase the number of attendees over time? I know that in your current space, which is 3,000 square feet, you have approximately 140 members?
Yeah.
And in this instance, you're more than doubling that size, and I think the number is 246 seats.
Yeah, we are because...
So my question is, is it reasonable for me to assume, or is it a reasonable assumption that over time, the church will increase in the number of its congregants?
Right now, we're not thinking of expanding, expanding. We are just basically want to accommodate what we have.
Okay. So at your current location, what was the number, if you recall, what was the number of parishioners at your current site when you initially opened your doors?
When we initially opened, we had like around, you know, 100, because we always had visits from people, you know? We've been having those faithful, like, since the beginning. So basically, we have family coming in and out, and what can I say? It is hard to say because we've been open for eight years.
Okay.
So...
But there's been a little growth in that eight-year period, it sounds like.
We've been in the same place for years, so...
Right, but the size of the congregation, it sounds like there was some growth there in that eight-year period.
And, well, basically, all the space has been in use since the first time, we just didn't have the opportunity to do what we're doing now.
Okay, well, when I say growth, I mean with the number of attendees. Okay, well, when I say growth, I mean with the number of attendees at the church, not necessarily the space.
How can I explain? Because families comes and family go.
Okay. That's fair enough. That's fair enough. Thank you.
Okay.
And just one point of clarification. It was mentioned that the closest home is three hundred and forty-two feet. And I'd just like to state for the record, that measurement is from the church to the actual structure of the home.
Correct.
But it's actually one hundred and eighteen feet from the church to the property line of that home.
But, that sounds about right.
Yeah, okay.
And we did agree at the planning commission to provide evergreens along that boundary. And, like I said, we, we don't have plans to expand. So, I think that if we did, that requires a whole nother process, and this is, this has been enough of our process, trust me.
Right, right. Okay. I don't have any other questions for the applicants. Do you guys have any? Not for the applicant? No? Go ahead.
No, but just a comment for you.
Commissioner, please put the mic on.
If, if this is approved, site plan specific, they would have to come back for expansion or...
I am aware.
Of the footprint and all that, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have some comments that our zoning code does consider the possibility of churches being located in residential areas. And so, a lot of the comments I heard in opposition seem to contradict that special exception use that we have in our residential zoning category. The minimum zoning for churches or religious institutions is five acres. This is ten acres. And I believe it also meets the road frontage requirement. I didn't see a variance for road frontage for...
That's correct.
And I want to be sensitive to the comments made in opposition, but I'm a little discomforted by what I'm hearing as an implication that churches shouldn't be located where people live. I'll leave it at that.
Oh, I didn't know if you were going to call staff, any other staff up?
Oh, yeah, I was going to call. I was going to call Legia. But, you know, if I just may piggyback on the chair's comments with respect to the opposition, I'm not, I don't think that the issue, and certainly we can call them up for clarification, but I don't know that the issue is that the church is in the residential area, because most churches, that's where they're located. But I think what I'm hearing from opposition is the location of it, and that it's literally in people's backyards. So, I think, you know, and we can have them for clarification to clarify their own points, but I think that, that was the main point of opposition, is it being in their backyard.
I, I agree. I heard that as a point of emphasis, but I also hear points about just it being where people live. I've heard, I mean, I've heard, taking notes and doing research as I'm hearing the comments and looking at our zoning code and just, again, what they may have emphasized and what they have shared just seems to be a little jarring, I would say, in, with respect to the zoning by right, which has been considered when we have five acres. And, you know, there are some restrictions or variances that I see that we have on, on the buffers or the setbacks, and perhaps that could provide some relief. And I could see there being some discomfort with it sitting behind some lots. I, I just don't know if it's a reasonable expectation that this be denied for that reason.
Is that it? Any other comments? Oh, okay, okay.
And I just also don't know if it's reasonable expectation to anticipate churches won't grow. I mean, any business, I think that has a level of success, we anticipate that. And again, considering that it is half, or, excuse me, it is twice the size of the minimum requirement for churches, which is five acres, just a little troubled by the fact that we would have this expectation that it not grow.
Exactly.
Expand.
Just at a point in hearing some of the dialogue as far as expansion is concerned, I can't perceive where we could lay on an expectation and make a decision based upon what a church has not yet decided to do. And considering the situation that they are moving from one location to another to accommodate the growth that already has occurred, it would actually be reasonable to assume that this church may find another location if they were to grow again. And so, it's this current need that we are contemplating for this current tract, and that is what I'm hoping we are deliberating upon.
Well, you know, just to add to that, while I do understand that they're moving from the current three thousand square foot space into a six thousand square foot space, I don't think that it's reasonable to believe that if they grow out of what we decide today, that they would move to another location. The logical thing for them to do at that point is to come back before the board to submit a site amendment for expansion. So, if they do move from this location, is after they would have exhausted all of their additional space for growth?
Correct. I, I, I don't disagree with that. It's just because that, I'm assuming that when that situation presents itself, it would be a new set of facts that would have to be considered. And then if that does not match up within the surrounding community at that point, the church would then be confronted with a similar decision that they're being confronted with today. So, that's all.
I see. Okay. Legia, chip in?
Good morning, Legia Florin, DOT.
Thanks. Thanks for meeting with me yesterday also. I had a chance to watch the PC meeting, and there was a fair amount of dialogue with respect to DOT requirements and the road improvements. And your updated comments of seven-five, you indicated that the waiver was approved for the left turn lane?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Sure. So, they, they submitted a waiver request as we indicated that they could. Based on the first traffic study, we determined that they needed a left turn lane into the building. They were proposing a ten thousand square foot building, and therefore, they triggered the left turn lane. So, they, they proceeded to submit a waiver request, and after a couple of iterations, we recommended that they took, they based their analysis on ASHTO, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, and go count, literally provide counts, new counts on, along the road, along South Gordon Road, and determine how many left turns would be happening into the church at the peak hour. They have now, after a couple of iterations, like I said, satisfied that requirement for the two hundred and forty-six seats proposed. If that changes, then that might be different. The left turn lane, the waiver will not be applicable.
Okay. But for that count, for two sixty-six, that did not consider any other possible event at the church, as was mentioned earlier, like a funeral, a wedding, or any other type of event? It was just purely based on two hundred and sixty-six seats?
Two hundred and forty-six, yes, ma'am.
Two hundred and forty-six.
Yes, correct. And based on the data that is there, the traffic that is there today, and the historical data that we have available.
Okay. And also, was that, was the consideration for the waiver, was the consideration for the recently zoned development on South Gordon Road considered?
That was, that was not part of the traffic study that they, that they provided.
All right. And just for the record, the development is on South Gordon Road and Maybleton Parkway, which may be about a mile or less from here?
Yes, least of that.
Now, with respect to the right turn lane and the taper, in the PC comments, there was mention that there is enough right-of-way to widen it by eleven feet. Can you talk to us a little bit about the right turn lane into the property?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Based on this, the road being a major collector and the density that they're proposing, we will, we will require a right turn lane into the development. The, the issue was brought up that they don't have enough right-of-way available for them, and that they might have to purchase land from the adjacent property owner. So, therefore, the conversation was had about how much right-of-way is existing right now. It appears that right now, without a topographical survey, twenty, about twenty feet are available of public right-of-way in, in front of their property, twenty feet width, which technically should, it should be enough for the right turn lane, eleven-foot lane wide, right? With the curving gutter and sidewalk behind it. And then the same with the adjacent property line. And the required right turn lane, the, the standard is a hundred and fifty of storage lane, which is the actual full width of the lane. And depending on the, on the speed of the road, which in this case is forty miles an hour, it requires at least seventy-five feet of taper. There was another conversation had about they don't have enough room, and what would be the minimum that would be acceptable? That would be decided at plan review. However, the comment I made was that at a minimum, if you're not going to provide any storage, at a minimum, we will have to require a hundred-foot taper so that the, the car behind you wouldn't hit you if you're trying to turn into the church.
Okay. And approximately, how many vehicles are stored or stacked in the taper?
Well, there's approximately twenty feet per vehicle, so depending on how long it is, if it's a hundred and fifty, of course, it will be seven or so vehicles.
Now, will it be one hundred and fifty or one hundred?
A hundred will be the minimum of the storage lane.
Is there space here for one hundred and fifty?
They have at least a hundred feet to their proposed driveway within their, their property lines, property boundaries, it looks like, without a survey. I did not survey, just measured in GIS, and it looks like they do. They have the hundred, and then they will have to do the taper in front of the adjacent property owner to the east.
Okay. And this one was also a waiver request, correct?
Correct. But we do not waive deceleration lanes.
Okay. And you mentioned that South Gordon Road is a major collector. Can you explain what that is, please?
It's just part of our major thoroughfare, so it connects two major roads, and, and it serves as a collector to the roads. And also, it's because of the amount of traffic. It moves eight thousand cars a day as the historical data, that's what we have available as a late discount.
Okay. So, based on your revised comments, the daily Sunday vehicles per day would be five hundred and forty-four?
With the two hundred and forty-six seats.
Right, with two hundred and forty-six seats. But that does not account for any churchgoer or any guest that may not be in the sanctuary?
Correct, yeah.
That may be in one of the other ancillary rooms that was described earlier?
Right, no, it's specific, just based on guidelines, based on this number of seats. It's just a guideline.
Okay. I think that's all I have for Legia, unless you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just do a follow-up, Legia. So, looking at the site plan that they submitted, right now, they have the driveway closest to the property line where it says R-20 here. There we go. So, they're going to have to redo their site plan, won't they, in order to get the taper in here?
Yes, yes. And that will be determined at plan review, the exact location of, of the taper and the deceleration lane.
Okay. So, we know pretty much from staff comments right now that the site plan will be changing potentially than what we see here? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Legia? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Stormwater had a question for Carl.
Carl Carver, Cobb County, Stormwater.
Hey, Carl.
Hey.
It was mentioned earlier that seven plus, approximately seven plus acres at the property will remain vacant, but I do know that this is adjacent to Starling Park. And my question for you is, would any stormwater from the development, whether it's during the construction, I guess during the construction, will be released in the lake at Starling Park?
It won't directly be released. It will be released into the drainage swell that's on the property, and then it will travel down to that lake.
Okay. All right. That was my only question. Does anyone have a question for Carl?
Yeah, I do. GIS, can we put back up the map that had the stream on there that showed the blue line streams? Carl, in looking at the original application that was approved for this site plan, and as opposition mentioned, it was built more to the front, the site plan as proposed today is pretty much going to be built over this blue line stream.
That's the indication from the GIS. I think they've gotten, well, I know they've gotten an environmental company to come out and verify with Frank Gibson where the stream is actually located, and I think it may be further back than our GIS is indicating.
Okay, because I know, you know, you've got staff comments that they're going to have to get permits and potentially pipe the stream and everything. But knowing what we've seen recently with the blue lines, what are the development standards as far as allowing developments to be built over a blue line stream?
Based on what they, the site plan that was, I think, dated in May, they showed the stream buffers. So, the buffers will still have to be respected in the pond. Their, their stormwater management will have to be outside the stream buffers.
Okay. And while I understand the stream buffers, I guess, again, looking at their site plan, either part of the building or the parking lot is going to be constructed over the stream.
I, I don't think the, the blue line stream that's showing on GIS is in the right location. I think it's further north and outside the area of their current construction.
Was, was that it? John, is there an update to what Carl is describing?
Yes. If you go to where Z9 is in Civic Clark, there's a file labeled Z9 2023 Site Plan Revised, June 1, 2023. That's the site plan you want to look at. Now, it actually shows the stream buffer further north on the lot than where the blue line shows it is on GIS.
Okay. Okay.
Are there additional questions for Carl?
If that's the case, then do they meet the buffer requirements for the stream buffer?
Right now, based on the, the plan that's submitted at that dam, yes, they do.
So, I would say it's up here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions for Carl? Thank you, Carl. Gamber, will you?
Well, where I'm struggling is going back and looking at the original site plan that was approved for this property, and it clearly has the streams drawn on this parcel. So, I would have to assume that they did their due diligence to put, to dictate where the stream was. And again, I'm seeing this building be built right over that, and knowing the issues that we're having in the county with developers building on blue line streams, that I can't support this, you know, if they maybe put it further back, or as in the original application, kept it out of that area. Because again, if financing is, you know, tight on the ch- Because again, if financing is, you know, tight on the church, I can't imagine what the cost would be if they had some kind of potential catastrophe down the road if that stream was truly there.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl. And my final question for, for staff is Jeff, is Jeff Bird here, Fire? Is anybody from Fire here?
No.
No? Jessica, maybe you can help answer, possibly? I don't know. It's really, it's really a capacity question, maybe, I don't know. So. Put on your fireman hat, I don't know. But, but it's somewhat of a, a capacity question, so it may fall under your purview. But D O T comments are based on the number of seats. And while I understand it's 246 seats and a traffic study is based on that, the question that I had yesterday of staff is, how do we calculate the capacity? Because what, the capacity of the church? And I was told that it's based on the sanctuary, since that's where the majority of the people are going to be. But, and just reviewing the file and listening to the applicant, there's going to be more than church service at this location. So while the D O T comments are based on the number of seats, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be the maximum number of people at the building at one time. And I just wanted to know what the building capacity is.
That's correct. And I certainly couldn't speak to what the building capacity would be. I would look to Fire to, to speak to that. But, yeah, certainly, I mean, it's conceivable that you could have your sanctuary and then you could have classrooms where perhaps Sunday school or what have you is happening at the same time that maybe the early service is happening. So I think it is conceivable that there could be additional people. But typically, from the standpoint of, of parking and those sorts of things, we do calculate that based on the number of seats actually in the sanctuary and the main gathering area.
Right.
But that's really more of a function of zoning versus capacity from a life safety standpoint.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jessica. You're a good sport. And John, there was a mention earlier regarding a fence. Was there a waiver request for the fence? I thought I saw that somewhere in here, but I couldn't.
You know, as far as zoning goes, you know, we don't require a fence. We just require a 35-foot landscape buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property.
Okay. All right. That's, that concludes all of my questions for staff. Do you guys have any questions or anything? These, these things are always tough. It's always tough. But, um, well, I want to thank everyone for joining us today and participating in the zoning process. I do know that there were several residents that were in opposition that attended the Planning Commission meeting that are not here today. This parcel, as you guys heard earlier today, it has a history that includes an original zoning of R 20 with no zoning conditions. And in 2006, it was rezoned to R A 5 with a proposal of 46 houses and rezoned as a R 20 in 2014 as a 3,200-square-foot Buddhist meditation temple. The temple proposed 15 parking spaces with 8.5 of the 10 acres remaining a forest area. By all accounts, this would have been a low-intensity use of the property and did not raise traffic concerns or opposition from the adjacent homeowners. The current proposal increases the intensity of the site with a 10,000-square-foot building and 65 parking spaces, although there was a revision to that request to 6,500 feet, although the P C recommended 5,000. But based on the applicant's testimony, that just would not be feasible for, for their, for the church. The intensity of the proposed use requires road improvements to accommodate the additional traffic. One such improvement, it's a 100-foot taper along the frontage of the subject parcel and the property to the east. Stacking will only accommodate approximately seven vehicles. And granting a waiver of the left turn lane can possibly increase the stacking of right-turn lane vehicles with the potential of safety concerns for those attempting to enter the property or motorists traveling along South Gordon Road. Churches are pillars of the community, and it is not uncommon for this type of institution to meet the needs of the community outside of traditional worship services. Some of those activities might include food and closed drives or other community and holiday functions. And these events can conceivably increase the traffic count above the current Sunday calculation of 544 vehicles per day. Although the Planning Commission restricted the use of the daycare, it is a permitted use based on the zoning ordinance. It is very conceivable that considering the acreage of the property and the church's room for expansion, there might be a future request to amend the existing site plan to include a daycare, which will add to the traffic calculations and concerns. Now, I, I understand that there is no plan, which was the testimony that was shared earlier today, that there is no plan to, to grow and increase the size of the church. But in having these options available, there is always the possibility of that happening, as it should, quite frankly. Staff's assessment that the current rezoning proposal does not create an excessive burden on the use of existing streets does not factor in the future expansion of the church, future possible expansion of the church or the recently zoned subdivision on South Gordon Road and Mabelton Parkway. While there is no plan to increase the size of the congregation, I am not aware of any church or religious facility that will turn away anyone searching for solace at their place of worship, doing so with a go against the principles of such a sacred institution that welcomes everyone. There are specific area policy guidelines for the South Gordon Corridor that were implemented to encourage residential revitalization and redevelopment along South Gordon Road from factory shows to Mabelton Parkway. The policy guidelines state that revitalization should include single-family detached structures to complement the existing neighborhoods in the area with additional density consideration. The current zoning application is not consistent with the specific area policy guideline for the South Gordon Road corridor improvement. Based on the specific area policy guidelines, traffic concerns, and careful review of this application, unfortunately, I am not in support of rezoning, this rezoning request, and I am prepared to make a motion. Can I just go ahead? Oh, okay. Okay. I make a motion to deny Z 9 2023.
Will the zoning for the 5,000 site plan still be approved if this is denied for the 60? No.
It goes back to the, to the current zoning conditions, which allow the Buddhist temple.
But that, was that not what was approved for the 5,000 square feet?
No, that was much smaller than that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
There's discussion. Are there any other comments or discussion? I'll just share that, um, I think the kind of use that a church would attract is actually the kind of use that would have been beneficial for this community. There is a need, there is a lot of need in this area. And one thing I perceive that our faith institutions provide in addressing need is that of hope and encouragement. And beyond that, I think that there are services that our religious institutions provide. There was a, there's a fire station that's been abandoned not far from this location that was intended to be a institutional government use to provide community services in light of the tremendous need that's in this community. But the age and configuration of that site ultimately did not lend itself for it to be used in that manner. So, seeing a third party being able to come in and provide a gap in services, potential gap in services, not even knowing, didn't really necessarily hear the heart of the pastor towards providing that, those uses. It could have been a possibility. I know there's some federal protections around churches and use of right based on acreage. So I have some concerns around that because again, they do meet the five-acre minimum and the frontage requirements. There are some buffer variances that I don't know to the extent of which those have been addressed from the presentation today. But I would just ask for communities that have, that have the potential for having religious institutions to perhaps consider some of the use benefit. I know we talked about some of the, I, I think, typical impacts we have of zoning, like traffic. Traffic is associated with any use. But I, I think here, there, there could have been potential for, for an exponential benefit beyond just having a parcel developed. This is my comments from.
If I may, I just want to address a couple of things. You know, although the church meets the requirement with respect to zoning, those are not the only items for consideration, which is what was discussed today with respect to, to traffic. South Gordon Road, as Ligia shared earlier, it is a major collector and it is currently just a two-lane highway, just one lane in each direction. And with respect to the fire station, that will provide a pocket park for the community while it will not offer services or gap services, as was mentioned earlier. It is still a benefit to the community. While this area, or at least parts of this area, can benefit from the church at the location, based on the pastor's testimony earlier today, there is no plan to expand services outside of their worship services. So I don't see where, you know, the gap services would have been provided at this location based on, on the pastor's testimony.
Commissioner Burrow?
The variances that are listed for the landscape buffer and setback, is that for the 10,000 square feet or the 6,500?
That was for the 10,000-square-building.
So do they meet the buffer and setback requirements with the 6,500? Because, you know, it's.
Okay. The, there's three variances that are listed in this application. I'll go, I'll go over each of those variances for you, Commissioner Burrow. First one is to reduce the required 35-foot landscape buffer to 20 feet, to a 20-foot landscape buffer as shown on the plat. It's shown as 20 feet in some areas. But, you know, it's my opinion that they could meet 35 feet in most areas, except for maybe where the entrance road comes in at the very front of the property, where the property is kind of skinny. But most parts, they, they can meet the 35-foot buffer. Number two, reduce the side setback for a church from 50 feet to 20 feet along the west propping line. They show graphically it's 20 feet, but the building is more than 35 feet away. So they would just need to change that dimension on the plan to meet the, the side setback. Third, reduce the rear setback for a church from 50 feet to 40 feet on the north property line. Again, they're showing a 40-foot setback, but they do meet 50 feet from the property line. So they would just need to graphically change that on the plat.
So. That, that, these variances in the book are based on the 10,000, not the actual current site plan proposed. But, um, you know, where they border homes, they definitely need to have the buffers and setback requirements, which that's what I'm asking, if they meet that. But I don't see the landscape plan on the site plan to show what they're doing to minimize that or to install that buffer to the residential properties. Now, on the, where staff recommends approval, subject to the following, number six says, 35-foot landscape buffer plan adjacent to all residential properties to meet the 35-foot requirement except along the entrance road, which may be reduced enough to allow entrance driveway and be approved by County Arbor. So that's on the 10,000. So, I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out if they have the buffer and the, and of course, the lighting and all that would need to be addressed.
Okay. We have a.
Commissioner Gamble also has.
I'd say, um, I have several locations of worship in my district that are along a four-lane divided highway. Traffic is always a problem. It's located in residential areas. It's gone adjacent to properties similar to what we're seeing here. The buffering is not adequate because again, light still extrudes, intrudes, causing problems. They're parking on the roads. They try to park in D cell lanes. Again, I cannot support this application, so I, I support your motion to deny as I believe it's our due diligence when we see development going into areas that is potentially damaging not only to the applicant but to adjacent property owners with that blue line stream. But also, I do not support the waiving of the left turn lane because that is critical. Because again, you've got that much traffic coming in. You will be blocking that road. I know what I see in my area where I have churches located in residential areas, and it does cause issues.
A couple of questions maybe for our county attorney or John. If they have the minimum, well, what keeps the church from going into this area outside of zoning if they meet the requirements for the special exception? Why, why are they here for zoning?
For, for this property, you know, it's subject to zoning conditions from 2014, which is zoned to a site plan for specific use and user.
Okay.
And, and they do not match that plan at all.
Okay.
And that's what's stopping them from just building the church.
Okay. And I would just encourage us, if we have all of these concerns, then perhaps we look at revising our code regarding that special exception use. Because even outside of that specific zoning, the concerns that I'm hearing are going to be inherent in the way that our code is written. And if the inherent nature of a church and its impact would prompt us to deny a zoning, then perhaps we haven't written that zoning code correctly to reflect these concerns.
Relupal Law, which is the Religious Land Use Institutional Persons Act, prohibits you from exclusively not allowing churches in specific areas. So you have to have an special exception in all areas.
Do we have to have it to the restriction or to the conditions that we have in the code? Can we modify our own code to still facilitate that development?
You, you're able to, to apply the same restrictions that you would have for any other, for any other building or use regarding traffic patterns, regarding stormwater or anything else that typically be, be built there.
And can you repeat the, the federal code?
It's a Ralupa standard. It's a bill signed by President Clinton in 2020. It's the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act.
Are there any other comments or questions, John? Were you going to say something?
What year was that?
2020. But the, your Cobb County Code, John and I were just talking about that a little bit earlier. Cobb County Code has always allowed religion, we did not have to change the code at that point in time. Cobb County had always allowed churches to be in R20 residential areas along with that special exception. So they did not, Cobb County didn't have to make the change, but some jurisdictions did.
Are there any other comments or questions? We have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries for one with Chairwoman Cupid in opposition. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I need to take a five minute break and we'll come back for our next case. Thank you.
That be R twenty encompassing the home. And next door is a G C where there's auto brokers and auto repair shops. In reference to next door, the auto dealership forty six twenty two. That had quite a bit of debris and also was contaminated. It was eligible for the Georgia brownfield program. And I took that through and I was approved and got the letter in May of this year. So that was quite an extensive process. Drilling wells to test the groundwater, boring for soil samples, removing contaminated soil, removing a lot of junk and debris that was there, inoperable vehicles were there. So I cleaned that whole property up and the buildings, I painted them and put new floors in with their vinyl flooring, replaced some toilets and just making the place upgraded to look better and also to serve the community. Prior owner had a dealership that was there for a number of years, I don't know how long exactly, but it was vacant for more than six months, so we referred it back to the G C, which is auto brokers and when I purchased the property, that's what was there. There currently is two auto brokers in that office and also an office for the auto repair shops in the back. And there's one tenant that takes, occupies building two hundred, three hundred and four hundred in the back and building one hundred, which is in the front, is the office. And what I was requesting is to have approved again for an auto dealership. My, in my opinion, I think that may be the best, best option. There's already auto related businesses there. And they see here on your screen forty five forty nine is a used car dealership and also they sell sheds. And then next door to that is an abandoned gas station. And I don't know if there's contamination there or not, I don't know, but that's been vacant since I've been there. And here's on the north side of the property, here's the next door neighbor, the majority of their front yard is concrete and we share a driveway for ingress and egress. And then here's the single family home where I reside and also you can see the dealership that's there. Going further southbound. There's another building here, which is an abandoned gas station, which is vacant. And that's about ninety feet from south of my property. And then the last one is Exxon Station, which is about eight hundred fifty-five feet south, which has extensive drinks and snacks and so forth as well as the gas station. So that's what's in the immediate area. There's in between the gas station and my property, there's four abandoned properties just sitting vacant. So that was, that was my goal, was to clean up the area environmentally, to upgrade the property, to stabilize property values. And that's what I'm requesting. That's my presentation that I have at this point, if you have any questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. I just want to make sure, as you shared the R twenty application, were there any additional points you wanted to share with respect to the special land use permit?
That's as far as the dealership?
Yes, we're going to hear both of these at the same time and then vote.
With the dealership, like I said, that's where it's currently being used as far as an auto broker, it was a dealership prior. And so, or is requesting to have a special land use permit to have a dealership be able to use that space again and encompass the building one hundred, which has parking in the front and the sides and the back for the vehicles. And then inside there's office, there's four offices in there and a lobby, restroom, that sort of thing. And I just thought that that would be the best use, that's what it was before. That's, that's what I was asking for, for the special land use permit.
Okay, does that?
I hope I answered your question.
Yes, I typically don't like to interrupt the zoning presentation, I just wanted to make sure you adequately covered both because we're going to deliberate both.
Sure.
Yes.
Is there a rendering of what the improvements you're going to make?
There is no improvements that are proposed, no new construction.
Okay, so the internal?
It is what's there. The only thing that the site plan shows that the fire department requested to have a turnaround in the back for emergency vehicles. And that's why you'll see there's like forty six hundred square feet of additional paving and that was to accommodate that. If that was not requested, I was just going to do some maintenance and repairs to what's currently there, which is servicing the property as is. So if I wasn't here, there would be no turnaround. So whether you want to keep that there or delete that, that would be up to your choice, what you would want to do.
Can you go to the slide of what, which building it is now? I think it was the brown on the left side.
There's the house next door and then there's that right there.
Okay.
That building there. I painted the front. I did renovations on the inside of, which encompasses like I said, replacing toilets and counters and replacing the floors, that sort of thing, just to make it look nice.
Okay, thank you.
So does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone here in opposition to this zoning? There was no one? Okay, I'll turn things over to the district commissioner and we may call you back up if we have additional questions.
Actually, Chair, if you can just remain right there, the improvements you just described, is that for the R twenty lot or for the auto broker building?
It would be for the building forty six twenty two, which has four, actually five buildings. There's a small shed and building one hundred, two hundred, three hundred and four hundred. One hundred is where the office is and the other three buildings are auto repair. So if the fire department had to go to the building in the back, the fire truck went there, they requested to have a turnaround back there so the vehicles could exit.
Okay, that's great, that actually rolls into my first question for you. We spoke on Friday and you mentioned that there were five buildings on the property and you just described that one as a shed, an office and three auto repair buildings. For the three auto repair buildings, does that represent three different businesses?
It's one.
It's one business with three buildings, okay? Okay. You mentioned earlier that vehicles were stored on the residential property, which you've since moved, removed from the property. But were those vehicles for the used car lot or for the car repair business?
Car repair business.
Okay.
Inoperable vehicles, junk cars, auto parts, and I removed all that.
Okay, and when you removed it, you moved it to somewhere else on the site or you removed it from the property completely?
No, offside, went to the junkyard.
Okay.
In the garbage.
Okay, all right, you already answered that question regarding the number of car repair businesses. That was the only question I have for you, we actually talked on Friday, so you were able to fill in some blanks for me. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? No, okay, that's it. I do have a question for John or Livia, or maybe I should for the record provide some clarification on the addresses because on both applications, it's reflected at as four six two two Austell Powder Springs Road. And that's incorrect. Hold on. Where is it? Okay. For the clerk, for Z twenty one and both SLUP six, they have the same address on the application, but for Z twenty one, the correct address is four six three two Austell Powder Springs Road in Austell. And that's shown on the site plan zoning analysis highlighted in orange. And the address for the SLUP is four six two two Austell Powder Springs Road. Does that make sense, Robin? Okay, all right. I don't know if this is a question for John or Livia, but it's regarding the landscaping installation. That would be John. John, would he be required to install the landscaping in front of four six two two?
Four six two two is where the used car lot is.
Right.
Four six three two is where the house is going to be. So one of the, one of the recommendations from the staff is to install the eight foot landscape enhancement strip and that's when we just done it in front of the commercially zoned properties. It wouldn't be required in front of four six two, four six three two, the house.
Okay, all right. All right. That's all my questions for staff, do you guys have any? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoffmaster, for joining us today and for speaking with me on Friday to provide greater insight into your zoning request. I commend you for your recent participation in Georgia's E P D brownfield program. Your participation in the program coupled with your improvements at the property and painting the buildings and changing the gutters shows your commitment not only to your property, but also the community, as well as your commitment to increasing the viable reuse of the property. As I shared during our call on Friday, in efforts to approve the economic viability of the area, the county in partnership with the cities of Austell and Powder Springs will implement a multi-use trail that will connect the Silver Comet Trail from downtown Powder Springs to the recently developed downtown Austell area and our Veterans Memorial Park. Additional improvements in the area also include our new Clarkdale Park, which includes a community garden. The city of Austell is a half mile from the subject property and the mayor of Austell submitted a letter of objection, which I think you and I talked about, to the zoning application. And in the letter, he states that he would prefer that the property be utilized in a more neighborhood friendly retail use that would complement the community with auto sales located in a more appropriate commercial district. I agree with and support that assessment. While the current location has been a car dealership for the past thirty years, we are presented with the opportunity to turn the corner from what was to what could be and offer the residents in the area a long awaited economic boost. When we spoke on Friday, you were pleasantly surprised to learn of the future economic development of the city, of the city of Austell and you were open to the possibility of a different use at your property to help stimulate the economic development in the area. Considering the city of Austell's future development of the area and the anticipated multi-use trail, the N R C or the Neighborhood Retail Commercial Zoning District would be more supportive of the community's economic viability. The N R C zoning district allows such as retail and restaurants, both of which would benefit from the new multi-use trail. And with that, I am prepared to make a motion for both Z twenty one and SLUP six.
It's got to be done separately.
Yeah, yeah, I have it separately. I make a motion to delete Z twenty one from N S and R twenty to R twenty, the single family residential, with the following conditions. Amend the zoning division comment number three to reflect that the installation of a full eight foot landscape enhancement strip along the property frontage is to be installed within six months after completion of the Austell Powder Springs Road Trail at the subject parcel's frontage. The eight foot landscape enhancement is to be submitted to the county arborist and the district commissioner for final approval. Remove zoning division comments number four through eleven. Okay, this is for the next one. All staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict. What was that, Bill?
We're discussing which property we're actually zoning, Commissioner Sheffield, because the zoning application, Z twenty one, it's for all two point one eight acres. So that includes the house parcel and the used car lot slash car repair, car repair parcel two next door.
Okay, but when we talked on yesterday, John, the conversation was that Z twenty one included N S and R twenty and the plan was to, or the recommendation was to delete it to R twenty. So now are you now saying that part of Z twenty one has a zoning of G C? I mean, it's noted here, but that wasn't my understanding of our conversation.
But this is going to be two parts, Commissioner Sheffield. The parcel with the house is forty six thirty two, correct? So that parcel is currently zoned R twenty and N S.
Right.
So for that parcel, the motion should probably state for forty six thirty two, I zone it from N S and R twenty to R twenty and then all those conditions that you just listed. And then for the commercial piece, which is forty six twenty two, it's G C and R twenty two, what category you're going to zone it to.
Right, and when I made my motion, my motion was to delete Z twenty one from N S and R twenty to R twenty.
And that's for forty six thirty two, which is the house parcel?
Right, Z twenty one.
That's correct, because Z twenty one has two parts, there's also a commercial portion, which is forty six twenty two.
Okay.
So just divide that by either the residential portion or the commercial portion.
Okay. So then how should I amend the motion then, John?
And all the conditions that you spoke of before I started talking have to do with the house parcel, correct?
Right, correct.
So make, make all those conditions subject to forty six thirty two only.
Okay.
And then as part of the same motion, you want to address forty six twenty two, which is the commercial piece.
Okay. Okay, so do I just need to go back and restate the motion?
I have the motion to delete R twenty one, sorry, Z twenty one to R twenty, modifying number three as such that you read in and then remove stipulations four through eleven and then all staff comments. And that's supposed to be for the parcel forty six thirty two, the house.
Correct.
Right.
And now then, I guess I need the motion for the other parcel forty six twenty two.
Twenty two, twenty two, thirty two is the house, twenty two.
Correct.
Right, so she already has it, do you just need me to clarify it again?
Yeah.
Right, I hadn't gotten to that motion yet for the SLUP. Right. Right, right. So the motion to rezone Z twenty one from N S and R twenty to R twenty is for single family residential at four six three two only, with the conditions that were already read into the record. Okay. And for the second motion, I make a motion to deny SLUP six. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry, guys, I'm just preoccupied with other thoughts right now.
Right, two parts to the first motion. So the first motion, you covered the first part, which is the residential property. Now the second part of that first motion needs to cover the commercial, or forty six twenty two.
Right, thanks, guys, just have a lot going on right now. I make a motion to delete or rezone Z twenty one from G C to R twenty for a single family residential for property located at four six three two with the following conditions.
We have this part.
Okay, so I don't need to repeat it?
Just for forty six twenty two, what's?
Okay, all right. All right, so moving on to SLUP?
No, ma'am.
Oh, Jesus.
It's like three different parts.
You did forty six thirty two, you gotta do forty six twenty two?
Correct.
Z twenty one has two parts.
Z twenty two. Z twenty two has two parcels, so you covered one parcel for Z twenty two. Now you gotta cover the second parcel.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, okay.
Or Z twenty one.
Commissioner Sheffield, if I can help you, your planning commissioner for four six two two recommended C R C, was the planning commission recommendation for four six two two?
Right, but that allowed for certain uses that.
You recommend N R C.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, though. All right, okay, so I'll make a motion to delete Z twenty one from G C and R twenty to R twenty for a single family residential with a property located at four six two two Austell Powder Springs Road.
And?
Pardon?
And what are you deleting that parcel to?
Okay, I'm getting to that part. Also make a motion and also make a motion to delete Z twenty, Z twenty one from N S to R twenty for a single family residential for property located at four six two two Austell Road.
And you still need to address forty six thirty two?
I did. I did that one.
I didn't hear it either, she addressed the residential.
Robin read it back.
Yes, we still need the commercial.
For what address?
She's, she's deleting the G C property that's at Z twenty one, forty six thirty two to N R C with?
No, to G, to R twenty.
You're deleting the entire parcel.
This.
Z twenty one and, and pardon the confusion with all of this, guys, it is a little bit to follow.
As opposed to using the Z twenty one, they're both are Z twenty one, can you just give us the address and the intended?
Yeah, okay. Well, there's Z twenty one and then there's SLUP six and that's where it's a little confusing because he has the address on both.
Yes, Z twenty one covers both addresses. That's what we're trying to share.
Okay, all right. So you have the motions for those, which one am I missing, Robin? I'm sorry, I'm just sorry. Okay, for the commercial piece.
Somebody can have the pointer on the screen or somebody can point to both.
I have it.
Yeah, we have it, but they don't.
So we can see the cursor go on each one as she's.
Because you've got N S over here too.
All right, all right, all right. Okay. Four six two two. All right.
Yeah, from G C, N S and R twenty to R twenty.
No, because this is, this is split. Okay, G C, N S and R twenty.
Help us out, John.
Two, hold on, two, N R C, okay. All right, so I make a motion to delete Z twenty one from G C, N S and R twenty to N R C for the property located at forty six twenty two Austell Powder Springs Road. In addition to the other, the other parcel, which you already have. Do I need to read that again, Robin? Are you, okay, you're good. But Robin's like, please no, please no. But I do need to add, I do need to add another condition to that one, that hours of operation for the car repair business, the car repair businesses are to be Monday through Saturday from ten A M to six P M and closed on Sunday. And all other staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict.
What? Commissioner, can you answer your question on the mic?
You're deleting it to R twenty but allowing car sales?
No, I didn't delete it to R twenty. This is N R C.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the first one, never mind. I thought it was all being.
No.
Okay, sorry.
To N R C, okay. Are we clear on that? I thought it was clear as mud, I'm sorry, guys, we just.
So you're not, you're not permitting auto sales, but you're permitting auto repair?
Right, for the current businesses that are there.
Under N R C?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And hours of operation and what?
And hours of operations and and staff, yeah, which I already stated, staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
Bill, did you have any?
No, I was just, I was going to suggest that we actually vote, since there's three separate motions that's pending, we probably need to vote on them all individually and then, then we'll still take with the SLUP, but let's go ahead and take care of.
Yes, three motions pending because we split the first one into two?
Yeah, it's two motions.
I've heard two, yes.
Motion with two parts, okay.
Are you saying I need to repeat this?
Yes, I heard two separate motions, there was a motion for the first parcel and a motion for the second parcel. We were trying to clarify, just to make that into a two-part motion for this, but since the two are outstanding, do we now need to vote regular, do we need to vote for each of them or can we just?
They were both seconded, if they want to be combined into one motion, it'd be up to the board.
They weren't seconded.
No, it wasn't seconded.
The second, the other one wasn't seconded?
No. So we can put it all in one motion? Regarding Z twenty one, right, right, right. I think you did second.
Who seconded, you seconded? You're comfortable with the changes for the second? Okay. John, yes?
I just have one question about the second part, the commercial part. For the, for the light auto repair, is it that use only or can you have other N R C uses on the property?
That use only.
Okay, so light auto repair only?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another question, yeah, question.
Which I will cover in my next motion.
So you have, you have other uses that would, could potentially in the future if that business no longer is there?
I'm gonna read it in the SLUP.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I see the applicant.
He's like, what is happening right now? There's just a lot of different zoning categories on the parcels, so we're trying to cut the lines and make things pretty clean for you. Sorry. Okay. We have first and then second, motion now a second.
Okay, and I just want to clarify, I'm sorry, that first parcel that has the home, are you deleting that so it can only be used for residential purposes and not for an office?
Correct.
Okay, the second parcel, we are deleting to N R C for the sole use, are we going to allow less intense uses as well?
Less intense uses, which I'll include in the SLUP.
So we're still are on the, we still are modifying the motion then?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I do feel a little concerned about the single, the sole use only comment at, towards the end, when you asked for clarification, it's sole use, I think you meant like, I'm not, I'm not sure, but are we, are we saying only that use because that's what we're about to vote on?
That, that it should be only used as an R twenty residential property?
We were, but it sounds like she's modifying it to include other uses, but.
Not the R twenty lot, I'm not.
No, no, not the R twenty, the N R C.
Commissioner Richardson is right, we, we thought, we heard a comment that this was just for this sole use, but we're hearing also a comment that you may also allow other less intense uses under the N R C zoning category that you haven't read in.
Right, that's correct, but that would be for the SLUP or do I need to read it now, John? Now, okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
Okay, if we have addition, ask, ask on the mic.
Is, is this an office or a home now?
That's a home. Yeah, he lives there.
Thank you.
Okay, additional prohibited uses should include, shall include any auto-related businesses except for the existing car repair business, businesses, adult entertainment, liquor stores, smoke and vape shops, pawn and title pawn shops, gold or precious metal dealers, establishments that sell sexually explicit or drug-related items and merchandise, check cashing businesses, gun, knife, weapon sales, and shooting ranges, and the final use to be approved by the district commissioner.
Okay, just for clarification, those are prohibited uses?
Correct. Did I not say that?
It didn't.
Oh, okay, I just, okay, I just wasn't sure if I need to go back and say it.
Prohibited uses except for the car repair.
Okay.
But you're gonna determine the final use if, even if it is a car repair or if it changes from car repair?
Even if, if it changes.
Okay.
And I'd like to also add to the prohibited use tattoo parlors.
Just for clarification. So his current operations that he has with all of his business that still persists because it is not prohibited, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Which is noted in the first stipulation except for the existing car repair and John's addition for this use and this use only, okay?
Wait till we get to all, because.
We have the fun cases.
Just wanna be clear, he currently operates no other businesses outside of car repair at this parcel. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have a question for the applicant. Sir, speak, if you can speak on the mic, it helps for those.
After we have a motion?
Oh, you can't call him up in a motion, I'm sorry.
No. Not, no.
No, sorry, sir.
I mean, typically the board doesn't do that, not in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Want to sit down?
Yes.
Yes.
Then to, to kind of infer upon, I guess, the question that was lingering is it, it seemed as though during his presentation he had indicated there were other services outside of the car repair, which included some mild form of a dealership?
That, that's covered in the SLUP?
In the SLUP, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
I wanted to ask the applicant, Commissioner, and if you can assure a hundred percent that it is his desire to keep the first portion of this motion as a residential use? Or was that being considered as part of the commercial? Part of his desire for commercial use?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't understand, are you asking?
The small square, he's.
Yeah.
He desires to keep that as a residential use?
Yeah, that's his current.
That's, okay. All right.
Yeah, that's his point. That's his, yeah, I didn't wanna say.
But even if we rezone it to residential for this purpose because it is what now? The future land use of this parcel is a CAC. That does not change, correct, John?
Correct.
Correct.
So, so again, with him having this R twenty, again, it's just to clean up because it is currently in a zoning category that is no longer recognized by Cobb County.
Right.
Can I confuse you guys any further?
You sure?
Please.
The two-part motion for Z twenty-one.
Okay, are we clear, um, for the, our clerk, are you clear on the motion?
Don't, don't, do you want her to read it back?
She. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero.
Okay.
And now we'll hear the motion for the SLUP.
Okay. I make a motion to deny SLUP six twenty-two-three.
And John, do I need to add anything additional about the deletion or didn't cover that?
Okay, just deny, okay. I make a motion to deny SLUP six twenty-two-three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Gambrell.
Commissioner Sheffield, just to clarify that the SLUP was only for the used auto sales, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero. Thank you, commissioners. Does he have? Uh, because we've, we've gotta speak on the mic if we're still speaking.
Yeah, do you need a timeframe for him to remove the used cars?
I don't think there are any on there.
Being repaired?
It's my understanding that he does not have a license to sell used cars right now.
So they're, right, it's, yeah, they lost it about six months ago.
Okay.
All right, commissioners, why don't we go ahead and move to the next case?
Okay. Okay, next case we're gonna hear is L E P fourteen, Miguel Mosiel, requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults, adults than the county code permits in Land Lot seventy-five of the sixteenth district. Property is located at the terminus of Tate Creek Court, west of Billis Ferry Road. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L E P fourteen? One? Okay, let the director show there's one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, my name is Georgina Castillo. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Georgina Castillo. We are here. Last time we were here, I don't recall that the case was to allow more adults. It was for vehicles, which is what we submitted a permit, filed a permit for. But in, in the household, there are five adults and one minor child. The five adults would be my mother, my sister, my sister's son, my oldest daughter, and my youngest daughter. So the five adults would be two cousins, two sisters, and grandma, and my minor child. I know the county allows four vehicles on the property. We do have eight vehicles. There are five driving adults, so we have three extra vehicles. Like I said, last time we were here, none of our, the vehicles are parked on the grass. Our driveway is a, a double wide driveway, so potentially you could fit more vehicles than we have. Last time we were here, there was also hypotheticals that when we were parked on the street, we could block emergency vehicles, but that was a hypothetical because it never happened. At the time when code enforcement came out, we did make the proper changes to move the vehicles onto the driveway because they do fit their, their space on the driveway for them. There was an officer that came out because our neighbors have a lot of time on their hands. They called and said that they were, we were parked on the street. Officer came out and said that there's, we were not illegally parked, that there was nothing that they could do because we were not blocking anybody. Everything was fine. There was one vehicle that did not have a current registration, which we got the registration and brought it onto the driveway. We, if you see the house there, like the, the, it's wide enough. The driveway is wide enough and long enough to fit the vehicles. We are just a working family, I mean, we don't bother anybody, and I don't understand, other than having extra vehicles, I don't understand what the issue is because they're not blocking mailboxes, they're not blocking anybody's driveway. The, the one neighbor that's here opposing, he is before our house, so he's not having to drive around anybody to get to his driveway. I don't know if you guys have any questions or if that's for later, but that's all I have to say. And then we have another neighbor that is adjacent to us, and they have no problem or issue with, with us having these vehicles or noise complaints, as our other neighbor was saying.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation, ma'am? Thank you, appreciate it. We'll now hear from opposition.
Morning, commissioners. My name is Darrell Salter. I presently reside at five-six-five Tate Creek Court, Accra, Georgia, three-zero-one-zero-two. If the application for a land use permit at five-six-eight is approved, it's gonna allow more cars, more vehicles to be parked there. There are times during the year that multiple families live in this single dwelling house, which is a small cul-de-sac of ten homes. I believe the current zoning is R fifteen for single-family homes, is that correct?
So this is your time to present, but this area is an R twenty?
It's owned for R twenty?
Correct.
For multiple families, sir?
No, sir. If you, again, when you present, it really is not our time to answer questions, but I'm sure the commissioner would be happy to address it once you're done with your presentation.
Okay. At five-six-eight Tate Creek Court, it is being utilized sometimes mostly during the years and mostly residents with people constantly moving in and out. I'm against the amendment to the county's parking code allowing four or more cars to be parked at the residence. Because of an abundance of vehicles, particular resident consistently results to parking in the yard or on the street. There have been times there that we have seen at least ten vehicles with more than one family living there at a time. The amendment would affect the value of our property and homes. This small street cannot handle most of the vehicles and/or fire apparatus to come through there sometimes if, if it's blocked. We would consider the opposition and deny the request for more vehicles at five-six-eight Tate Creek Court. It was mentioned at the previous meeting on five, July twenty-twenty-three that a the owners that would have a business running out of there. She said that they had a decorating business, but never mentioned what type of decorating business. So, from what I understand, they have a cake decorating system there, and it was never asked what type of decorating company that she'd had at the, at the five-July meeting. If that's true in, in regards to a cake decorating business, then I would assume that you would have to have a health license or an LCC to operate that type of a business. That's all I have to say at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Commissioner, I believe he was the only one in opposition, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The application is for requesting eight cars. The, I did watch the planning commission to be a little bit more familiar with this. It, it was a result of code enforcement, and I'd like to enter the citation for the record. And I'll give this to you. But the business, well, let me just address the business first. I had the same question of what kind of business, if they had a business license, but they are allowed a customary home occupation in the, in a residential use. So that's not, they're not in violation. And it's my understanding that it's like decorating houses or furniture and window treatments or whatever, that type of decorator, not a bakery. But I may have to call the applicant up to.
So to you, she's standing up right now?
Would you like to come up, ma'am?
I actually did state that in the past meeting. It's an event decorating business, so parties, children's parties, weddings. That doesn't happen there, we, it's not food, it's, um, I go in and set up props and stuff, which.
And they're stored in the?
Yes, in the shed that we have in the back, which we did request a permit to build last year, and we were granted the permit.
Okay. But no one's coming to your house?
No.
Or you're not selling out of your house?
No, no. All of my business is done online. I have a page on Instagram and Facebook, that's how my customers reach me. That's how I, via email, that's how we sign contracts. If we do meet, we meet at the location where the event is gonna take place because we don't have an event space. It's, this is where we live, and I just have my props there.
Okay. And John, that is allowed?
Yes, she, she is permitted to have a customary home occupation.
And we do have an LLC.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Though not required, I mean, you could be a sole proprietor. I mean, there's so many, there are different business forms, but thank you.
Thank you.
And if you would just stay up for a minute, a minute, because other than that, I also want to address the number of adults. By the three-hundred-ninety-square-foot rule of the house, I think she's allowed four adults, four?
Correct.
Okay, and you're asking, well, you're really asking for the cars, but the adults are all related?
Correct, it's my mother, my sister.
Your mother, your sister.
My nephew, my, and my two daughters and myself.
Okay. So that, I mean, we do have, you know, the dwelling code, but I just wanna make sure that you understand you're all, that they all have to be related.
We are, yes, we are all related. Yes, I did read with the code.
Okay. And then also on the cars, you're, you're asking for eight?
Correct.
And I think planning commission allowed five?
Yes, when we were here last time, they, they suggested five.
And no parking on Tate Court, Tate Creek Court?
Correct.
All would have to be four, four only outside is our code too for, in the driveway. And then one truck or car could be in the garage. So, okay, I mean, you understand?
When she, when we were here last time, she said five and then the extra, which would be six, but then when, before we left, she said five, so I wasn't sure at the end what they suggested.
Okay, that, this is, their motion was to allow the parking of five vehicles at the residence, representing the five drivers at the house. So one can be in the garage and one, and four outside, maximum of four outside in the driveway. No parking on the street.
Okay.
And then they also recommended that the three additional cars, the eight, because you have eight, eight, and you're asking, and we're limited to five. The other three have to be removed within sixty days from today.
Okay.
And then, I know you were asking for a twenty-four month, but with the neighbors in opposition, because there were two, two that spoke at planning. because there were two that spoke at Planning Commission, and I guess one, only one is here today. But I would consider a 12-month, and then if everything goes okay in the next year, you can come back for a renewal, and we'll see if we can extend it for 20.
Trust me, we'll be here again in 12 months, because they have nothing else to do.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure you understand...
I understand.
What we're considering for approval, okay? All right. That's all the questions I have. If anybody has any?
Commissioner Sheffield? Is one of your vehicles a work vehicle? That you use for your business, or?
No, I mean, we use them, yes, for one for work and one for personal, but we don't have them marked SO. Like, there's no marking on the vehicle. We just know, like, this is just my work, and this is my personal. But yes, actually, two of them are.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so I'm not sure if you were agreeable to parking one vehicle in the garage?
To what, agreeable to?
Are you agreeable to parking one vehicle in the garage?
There is one vehicle in the garage.
Okay.
So there's seven vehicles outside of the garage currently, and one inside the garage.
Okay. I have another question. Commissioner Sheffield? Can you park two vehicles in the garage? Or is it additional storage that you're using?
No, it's not. And like I said, there was a neighbor here that came that is not an opposing neighbor, if you guys allowed him to speak.
I didn't, you know, I didn't ask that, and I apologize, because we give 10 minutes for the applicant and those in support, and 10 minutes in opposition. And...
I mean, you was sworn in.
She didn't use all of her 10 minutes.
I think there were 6:42 left, so...
I just need some advisement if we can allow the additional person to speak.
But there's not a motion. No one's made a motion as part of your discussion.
Yep. Okay.
This is your discretion.
Yes, they can speak.
Okay.
Hello? If you can help us in stating your name first?
My name is Nathan Halpern. I'm her next-door neighbor. I live at 572 Tate Creek Court.
Okay.
I'm here today just to support them and make it known that they do keep their cars off the street. All their cars are on the driveway. They've never been a problem, never come to ask us to move anything or been any nuisance to us. There's no noise coming out of their house ever. It is just one family there. I think you mentioned that there's multiple families there, but there's only one family living there, as far as I can tell.
Okay.
That is all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, turn it back over.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm ready to make a motion. I think I covered everything with the applicant. I would like to make a motion to approve lot 14 for 12 months based on the following conditions. Five related adults. Five cars, maximum of five cars at the house. Four outside in the driveway and one in the garage. Applicant to remove the three additional vehicles within 60 days from today's date. No parking of vehicles on Tate Creek Court. And all staff comments and Planning Commission comments not otherwise in conflict.
Okay, is there a second?
I did say 12 months. Okay.
Second. Any further discussion? Commissioner, I'm supportive of your motion. Just one observation that may have been implied. Are you amenable to another work vehicle outside of the five being on the lot? No? Okay. All right, that's your call. All right, any other questions or comments? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an other business item, and this is for other business item number 32 of 2023, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Carbar Atlanta regarding rezoning application Z-63 of 2014. The property is located on the south side of Schalifer Road, east of Tricken Road, in Land Lot 338 of 16th District. Is the applicant present? The director showed the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 32? The director says there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Sir, you may go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Melvin Bartel. I'm here on behalf of Carbar Atlanta. We submitted an application for other business. The building that we're moving into is zoned commercial, but it had some special stipulations in it. It was previously a hardware store. So in the minutes, there were special notes that limited the use of that property. However, we think it is fit for the business that we're doing, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation? Or do you want to talk about the business that you're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
We are hearing this as... You know, this is the first time we're hearing it. So even though you made a presentation to our Planning Commission, this is a new board.
Understood. So the application is for light automobile repair. We repair classic vehicles. Most of our business is going to be concluded, conducted behind the walls, nothing on the outside. I actually live in the neighborhood, so I'm committed to making sure that the property is kept up, that there's no derelict vehicles outside, anything like that. I wouldn't do anything to bring down the value of my own neighborhood. I'm within five minutes from there. So I... There's nothing else I can think of that I'd like to say? Good? All right, thank you.
No one here in opposition? Correct, okay.
Is there anyone else?
Is there? Thank you. We need to make sure we add that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of this application? Okay, yes, sir.
My name is Danny McCurdy.
Okay.
I've owned the property since 87, and I had a hardware store there for some 30 years. And we had small engine repair. And then I retired and moved out about 15 years ago. And another tenant came in with small engine repair, U-Haul and propane. And we've been approved for all of that. We've had no, excuse me, complaints or... We've not irritated anybody or aggravated anybody. And I've leased the building in the last couple of years to a couple of tenants that really didn't help the business, didn't help the neighborhood. This gentleman has... I've had several potential clients, and I picked him because he has got businesses now that he keeps clean. They're neat. They're all inside. He's not a major auto repair. He just does minor on his classic cars that are very nice cars. And he just does minimum repairs to keep them up and going. So that's... I think he would be an asset to the community.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else desiring to speak? Sir, I know you've spoken already. I need to understand protocol. If someone's time has not finished running, can they?
Just one presentation?
Just one presentation? Okay. Thank you, sir. If we have any questions, we'll call you back up. John, what is staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff understands that the property currently only has one use for it. It's approved to be a hardware store with truck and trailer rentals with propane sales only. So the staff would recommend that the board allow neighborhood retail uses and professional offices. And number two, the board prohibit light auto repair on the property.
Okay. Okay. And light automotive repair is permitted under NRC, but you're excluding that?
That's right.
Okay.
But we're giving them the professional offices and the light and the neighborhood retail uses, which is about 2 dozen different uses.
Okay. All right, Commissioner?
I'd like to call Carl, Carver up. It's my understanding, Carl, that there's a creek that runs behind this property?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you address any concerns of detention or runoff or?
Well, right now, I don't think they're proposing any modifications to the site, so...
And wouldn't that be required for detention or something for runoff?
Not unless they disturb over 5,000 square feet.
Okay. So if they keep the building as it is and just renovate inside there, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Could I have the applicant to come back up? So how long have you been operating at this location or leasing?
At this location, we signed the lease 30 days ago, but we haven't been operating as of yet out of that location.
Okay. You just have a few cars stored inside there?
Correct.
Okay, because when I went by, I saw two classic cars and didn't know.
Correct. We're using the building. I'm paying for the building and using it for storage at the moment. We've started painting that type of renovation in there, but it's just storage.
Okay. So, John, the reason they're in for other business is because of when it was zoned originally, it was for a specific use under NRC?
Correct.
That didn't include light automotive?
That's right.
Okay. And that's all I had of applicant, and I think perhaps has any question?
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
I have a question for John, if I may jump in, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
John, for purposes of the code, and I may be splitting here is here, but is restoration and repair considered the same thing based on the code?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I do think that automotive repair and light, even light automotive, is too intense for this commercial retail area. I understand that it will be totally enclosed. And just working on classic cars, not... I don't know, it's... And staff has recommended denial, so can I hear some suggestions from the rest of the crew here before I make a motion? Kelly?
I have... I have a question. Do we know how many cars he plans to have at the location?
No. But can the applicant come back up?
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thanks. How many cars do you plan to have at the location?
No more than 10.
And will they all be inside?
For the most part, yes, ma'am. As long as they fit inside. There are some instances where we'll have some large vehicles, something may be outside overnight. But for the most part, what I deal in and the value of those cars, they need to stay inside.
Right. Okay, so the repair, will you only be repairing classic cars? Or will you be oil change for anybody to come through?
Only classic cars. Eventually, we would like to service customer vehicles, but those will still be classic cars, and it'll be by appointment and availability only. Right now, we're at a maximum capacity of just dealing in our own vehicles, so...
Okay. And no sales? No, just repair, light repair?
Correct.
And I noticed, too, a bay door at the back?
Yes.
Is that where you would be working on them, and then they would be stored inside in the building out front on Schalifer?
Correct.
Facing Schalifer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you'd be limited to repairing one at a time if you only have the one bay, correct?
It's deep enough, two at a time is what the number is.
Okay.
There's two lifts in the building, two places to lift vehicles in the building.
And you can keep them all inside except the ones being worked on?
Yes, ma'am.
Would be in the bay?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have something?
Sir, if you could clarify for me. So there's currently lifts in the building today that you would be utilizing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And that's confusing, because why would it be zoned for a hardware store and a U-Haul trucks or rental and propane rental? Do you have... Do you need to do the propane rental?
As I stated, we started the renovation, so I had those lifts set in the building. Nothing is wired in, nothing's anything yet. But we've already set up the footprint of how we're working. Just like you said, you went over and you saw vehicles in there. We're already setting up our configuration for what works for us.
Okay, but you're not expanding the building that's there now. You're just renovating internally?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So you'll be adding the repair part, the tools and the equipment for the?
Correct.
Bay?
Yes, ma'am.
Area?
Did you want to?
Okay.
Maybe there is opportunity in defining light automotive work by these specific limitations. And that way, it's not just any random... Because I know that's the concern here. Or I would perceive that's the concern is what would happen in the future if this company is not operating there?
Well, on his application, he has light automotive repair to include brakes, tune-up, electrical, air conditioning, propane cells, and refill will be the same as previous.
So I mean, even further defining it as in only on classic cars?
Yeah.
Up to 10 cars, no sales?
And them...
All working doors, et cetera? Restoration, restorative? What's that?
So to tag off of your... To tag off of your restoration, will you be painting?
No, ma'am.
At the Sisley? Okay.
No painting.
Okay. And then my only other comment is, I know this is becoming a demand to have service for classic cars, because I've had a couple individuals ask me about locations in my district as well. So there is definitely a need that is starting to arise in the community to service these types of cars.
Well, and I'd rather have him in a building in a commercial area than in his yard at home. So you live near there, too, right?
I do. I do.
Okay, are you making any improvements, like landscaping or?
To the exterior, yes, ma'am, we're going to clean up the landscaping, repaint the building. Everything that you see that is, has become an eyesore, we're going to correct. The main things I can see right off top, we're going to paint the building as soon as this is approved or denied. We're going to clean up the landscape and make it look nice out front, get some new side down, that type of thing.
Okay, and what is the length of your lease?
Five years.
Okay. Okay.
May I ask the, Commissioner?
With the description of the type of repairs that the Commissioner just read with oil change, brakes repair, et cetera, does that fit into the future business model? Because you indicated that eventually you like to service other vehicles. So on your application, is it for the classic cars or does that fit into your future business model as well?
It fits current and future.
Okay, thanks.
And there's enough room in the building, which I call like, it looks like a showroom kind of because it's all glass? For a maximum of 10 cars?
There could be more, but 10 is my number, 10, 10 works for me.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask one question in anticipating a motion? We talked about classic cars, Mr. Bartel, what are, what are classic cars? What's your definition of that, are they older than 25 years old, is that what the license plate?
Older than 25 years, yes, sir.
That's for the license plate for 25 years?
Correct.
I just want to make sure we have a definition of what classic cars, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Does that need to be restrictive in my motion, 25 years? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve other business 32 subject to subject to a maximum of 10 cars. Classic 25 years and older classic cars on site at any given time. Light automotive repair to include brakes, tune-up, electrical, air conditioning and no painting and all work to be done inside the bay area and any landscape or improvements outside to come back for, through the county arborist and district commissioner for approval and all other comments or all other stipulations from the original zoning remain from 2014, remain in effect. Not otherwise in conflict.
Commissioner Richardson? Let's get a second and then a discussion, since you made her motion.
Second.
Okay, well, now have discussion.
Just a question, it was also mentioned no sales were expected to be at this location of cars?
No, no car sales, just repair.
Right, I didn't know if that was something.
And then also, I forgot to I forgot to add propane sales, John, that's allowed under the current, the original zoning. So I'm sorry, I, and you could have the propane sales. But no truck rental, no sales or rental, just repair, light repair on the classic cars.
And the second, which I'm not sure if he's amenable to, but just asking on the hours of operation if that was something as well?
I'm looking to see if they had hours on the original. No. I don't see any hours of operation.
Can we call him back, we already have a motion. They can't call him back up at this time.
Now, we're in discussion, but we can't call him back up, right?
Hours of operation.
Correct, but everything, but everything that's happening is inside, is inside this building, so.
John or Jeannie, were there any hours of operation on the original zoning or on his request? I don't see anything on his application, but.
There are no hours in the zoning conditions from 2014. You know, I did look at the applicant's website, I think he closes at 6:00 PM every day. So maybe hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
What are the days of operation?
Monday through Saturday.
The days of operation, was that on the website?
Oh, yeah, that's on the website, Monday through Saturday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
And they're closed on Sunday?
Probably need to ask the applicant that, I didn't get that from the website.
I can't call him back up. Closed on Sunday? Okay. Okay, the hours of operation? And include the hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday and no Sunday operation. Are you agreeable to that second, thanks for asking. This is getting as complicated as, as the other one. You wanted some company, right? Okay, that would be my motion, anything else, John?
Commissioner, did you have something else to add?
Do we just need to include staff comments and recommendations? Because fire department, I didn't hear you say that in your motion.
I said all other stipulations to remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict.
Right, but the fire department comments are different than what they were more than likely when it was originally rezoned.
Okay, and all staff comments, not otherwise in conflict.
Are you okay with that?
This is our last case, so.
Are you okay with adding that, okay?
We're all giddy.
All right. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Let's call the question. The motion passes 5-0, congratulations, sir. I believe this concludes our Board of Commissioners hearing this July 18th, 2023. Don't forget this evening, we have another hearing with respect to our budget and millage. Please, tonight's just millage, please feel free to come join us, thank you.